Thanks, Jen. This is Council President Stacy Kelly. We're going to begin our committee meetings of Tuesday, July 28, 2020, and we'll begin with rules, ethics, and ordinances with Chairperson Rick Delacqua.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Based on the conversation that just preceded us, I'm going to assume that I do have a quorum. At our last meeting, we discussed the possibility of amending our city ordinances regarding the parking of trailers and RVs. We tabled that discussion pending a report from the Building Department to be reviewed by the Law Department, and then, once we had that written report, we would then pick the subject up again. I just discovered today that the report has been prepared. It's still being reviewed by the Law Department, who presumably will have some modifications and other things to report back to us. So with that, I will just simply ask Law Director Pignatello if that's accurate and where we are with the receipt of that report.
Yeah, I reviewed it two weeks ago, and it was okay with me. But I was told today by Chris Tobin that she has some comments she would like to make. So I don't think you can pass it today. I guess we never told Jeff that the housing prosecutor, if that's what you want to call her, is Chris Tobin, and anything that gets prosecuted out of Building Department should be run by her. My mistake, too. So we're waiting for Chris now, as of today, to put her two cents in.
All right. I stopped in and took a look at the file today. That was the only thing in the file, and obviously it's from a couple of weeks ago. So with that, I'll turn to the other two members. Do you have anything that you would like to say for tonight's meeting?
Oh, this is Councilman Elliott. I'll expand on that one, Mr. Chair. I had some issues with that ordinance. I didn't make due diligence, and I actually talked to the Building Department and several other entities, and they... I'm satisfied with the results, and I'm... It's kind of sad we're not getting it out tonight to get that thing pushed through. That's number one. I do have one other thing I'd like to bring up, unless Councilman Snitzky wants to... Does he have any comments about this ordinance?
Go ahead, Patrick. Make your... Do what you got to do first, and then I'll comment about the trailer ordinance.
Well, I'm done with the trailer ordinance. I am satisfied, and I'll be anxiously awaiting the Chris Tobins' comments.
I'll just... This is Councilman Snitzky. I'll just echo what Pat said. I think it's just a matter of cleaning up the language so that the trailers are under the same rules as the rest of the RVs, and I'll wait for what Chris Tobin has to say. Thank you.
Let me go back to the members of the committee before we expand the discussion. Norm, do you have anything?
Oh, this is Norm Martin. I'm not part of the committee. I'm just part of council on this one.
I'm sorry. I was thinking finance. Okay, so we have the comments from our two members, Snitzky and Elliott, and now we'll open the discussion of the rest of the council members. Does anyone have anything on this subject before we turn to something else? Okay. Pat, you said you had something new for the committee?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I do. Sure you're all aware. I kind of put it out there a few weeks ago that I was getting phone calls. I guess what I'm going to ask the committee to do is not sure if we can repeal. I've been talking to the Law Department and also Building. I've talked to several other cities surrounding us about bringing the chickens back to Seven Hills, I guess you want to call it. I'm not sure how to say it without sounding crazy, but a lot of people have come to me. I bet you I've received between letters and phone calls 25, 30. There was a big online conversation going on about it, and I think residents are looking to get chickens back into the city of Seven Hills. And I'm not sure when it was banned. I'm sure it was about six to eight years ago, and there's different stories about how it became banned. I want everyone's input on this because I think it is a big thing here. A lot of the younger people are coming to me asking why they're not allowed to roost their own eggs, and I don't have a problem with it. That's why I'm bringing it to the forefront. I did talk to Independence Building Department, who... Independence Building, Broadview Heights Building, Brooklyn Heights. There are several other cities that have allowed chickens, and they don't even have ordinances on it. One of my big things was, you know, how many complaints are they receiving? How many complaints are on record? And to date, I have not found one incident where people are complaining about smell, clucking, because, you know, obviously, they're just hens, they're not roosters. So I'm bringing it to the committee tonight. I want to put it... I want to make a motion to repeal that ordinance. And I'm all up for conversation on if you want to have certain restrictions, and I wanted to give you something that I thought of, that I thought would make this real easy if we did repeal it and act like the other cities around us. It'd be to pull some type of permit. I mean, it could be a free permit and allow these things, and if we start getting complaints from neighbors, we just pull their permit and not allow it. I mean, it's... I think it's just like a dog or a cat. Some people are going to take care of their stuff, and some people aren't. So, I mean, I don't think there should even be an ordinance, to be honest with you, with this. I don't think we're going to have every resident in Seven Hills putting chicken coops up in their backyard. But I'd really like to know what the rest of the committee thinks. You could start with you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I know you and I have had this discussion before. I don't know that it belongs in the Rules Committee, but I guess we can at least begin the conversation here. My biggest concern would be notifying surrounding neighbors, whether an application is made, a permit's going to be issued, or after the fact. I would think that the neighbors that surround... And I'll take, you know, what you said as accurate. I don't know. I haven't looked at whether or not there have been complaints in any other community, but I would suspect that neighbors would have concerns about things like noise and smell and property value issues and attracting predators, so for bugs and that sort of thing. I don't know. I haven't looked into it at all, but it seems to me that those are things that would have to be clarified before we did anything. Biggest concern to me, though, is that the people who would be most significantly impacted ought to have a voice in whether or not their neighbor is going to be raising chickens. So anyway, that's just my first take on it. I'm willing to look at it if the Council President feels that it should remain in the Rules Committee. Tom, what do you got?
Oh, this is Tom Snitzky. A little history. Basically, probably about 10 years ago, and Ricky, I think you were around then on council. Council voted to get to ban domestic animals, domestic farm animals. At the time, you could still have horses in the city of Seven Hills. There were probably... I think you could have goats. The thought process then was that we've grown up, and we're not country anymore. Well, since then, the thoughts in society have changed. We've gotten more of this farm-to-table mentality, knowing where your food's coming from, raising more of your own food. So I think it's something that we ought at least consider looking at, but I think we need to have some limitations. I think there ought to be a permit. I think it's not unreasonable to have a nominal fee for that permit, since the Building Department is going to be in charge of inspecting these things, and they're going to have to pay, you know, somebody to do it, or at least have the resources to do it. I think you might want to have a size lot limitation. I'm not really sure you want some of our smaller lots in certain areas of the city having farm animals on them. I think you have to limit the size of the number of chickens you can have. You have to ban roosters, and I think it's a problem with it, but there needs to be some thought put into it, and it certainly needs to be controlled. I will tell you that when this all... This ban happened years ago. I had had a couple of calls about people with roosters, and I actually got a call today about somebody with a rooster, not in my ward, but, you know... So I think it's not a problem. Somebody may recall that there was a veterinarian lives north of Long Ridge, Joe Rapatek. He told me straight out when I inquestioned him about this that if you have, you know, four to six hens, and the coops are kept clean and they're maintained, that most people found you won't even know you have them. But again, I think it's something we need to revisit because the thought processes, especially for the younger people moving in, have changed, but I also think we have to control it, and I think that, you know, a permit with a nominal fee and some limitations, I think it's something that's doable again. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the rest of council want to have any input at this point, or do you want to wait until we have additional hard information on it?
Chairperson Delacqua? This is Councilwoman... Councilwoman Stacy Kelly. I just wanted to ask Councilman Elliott if you reached out to any of the animal control officers in the area, because they typically oversee these issues.
Madam President, I did not, because they do not oversee any of those. Actually, when you sent an email to all of us, I contacted the Building Department in Independence and told them that, you know, I was checking in on the animal control officer who sent that out, and they said that she has nothing to do with the structures or anything like that, and the only thing that she actually would go out to do with any chicken problem would be to... If one of them got loose, then a neighbor called. And the Building Department and the Police Department, both, because I contacted both of them, have never had a complaint about that. So the animal control officer does not have anything to do with the chicken populations in the cities. It's the Building Department. And I contacted all the Building Departments, who said they have more problems with feral cats and people's cats getting out. That's where most of their complaints come from. That's when they turn it over to the animal warden. That's her job. So if a chicken were to get loose, they would contact her, but that's the only knowledge they have, and every city I called, none of them have had an issue with that.
Okay. That's interesting, because I did speak directly with the animal control officer, and she did mention to me that she does, you know, oversee, responds to complaints like you stated. Typically, if they're nuisance, they have to treat it as a nuisance, like with the odors and the noise and, you know, stuff like that. And I'm not going to say no to what you're proposing, but I think it is an issue that definitely requires more research. The one thing that our animal control officer did suggest, she highly suggested that this be done by ordinance. And I also talked to the animal control officer in North Royalton. They have a very unique situation there because, you know, some people have a small lot, others have farms, so they do it out there on a case-by-case basis because of the way their city is set up, okay, as far as the land and the size and whatnot. But there's other things to consider, too. You know, I'm trying to look at it from both sides. So I hear stories about... And I'm a city girl, so I really don't know a whole lot about the whole country thing and the chickens and all of that, so there is a learning curve here. But I worry about the spread of salmonella. That's supposed to be a huge concern from animals to humans. That is very possible. The smell from the waste. These chickens typically, from what I'm reading, is that they only hatch eggs or lay eggs for two to three years. And then what do you do with the chickens after that? You know, I did see some of the comments online, and, you know, people want fresh chickens to eat, so we can't have residents slaughtering chickens in their backyard. We can't do that. So there's a lot of things that we need to look at. You know, we have a city that is, you know, what was the... I can't even remember the percentage. Over 60% of the residents voted for, you know, bow hunting. They don't want to see the deer. Well, chickens bring a lot of animals. They bring a lot more than, you know, that we don't want. Raccoons, rodents, pit bulls, you know, foxes. So there's a lot of things to consider. I don't want to just repeal an ordinance. This is going to take something... It's going to take considerable thought, like Chairperson Delacqua suggested. You know, we have to look into things. We have to see how this is going to affect surrounding neighbors. I definitely don't want to impede, you know, the quality of one's life. So I'm not saying no, but I'm saying we have to definitely look into it and research it a little bit more. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else on council?
This is Councilman Elliott. I'd like to respond to some of that, please. And I respect your opinion, Council President, but some of the things you said can be related to cats. I'm sure some members of this council have cats that they let outside. It's the number-one complaint in every city are feral cats and loose cats. To say, and I don't want to get too far into this one, but you really need to be careful when you tell people that they're not allowed to slaughter animals in this city, because I know for a fact there are a lot of ethnic backgrounds on Easter, Christmas. That's what they do, and it's not just chickens. It's lambs and everything else for their celebrations, and that's something that... I mean, that's a right for a citizen to do in their backyard. So you can't even bring that up, and I know you may think it's inhumane to do that, but to someone else, it's a right, and it's a privilege. But I think we have a bigger problem, and talking to all these other cities, they don't even have ordinance on it. They don't even consider putting an ordinance on it because they don't have any issues with chickens. The one person I talked to, which might have even been North Royalton, I believe it was Broadview Heights, that they were thinking of restricting people from having certain animals, but that's also a violation. I mean, this is America. We have rights, but they have to follow the rules. So to put an ordinance on, I'm fine with, to put it out there, but when we start restricting people and say, "Due to your lot size, you're not allowed to have this," I think that's an overstep of government, because what if we come back and say, "Okay, your lot's only X size. You can't have any cats or dogs," or "You can't have a swimming pool," or "You can't have this. You can't have that." I mean, I don't agree with that. This is pretty simple. I mean, everyone's making a giant deal out of it. You allow people to have chickens. You monitor it. If you're having complaints from neighbors about smells and stuff, which is... I have not found one complaint from any other city about smell. I have researched this. I've been doing this for the last month. I've called every city, so I don't know how much more research I can do, but there are no complaints from other cities about chickens. So I think we're making a big deal out of this based on maybe people's perspectives. But I say, I want to get this on the agenda. I want people to talk about it. If we have to put some restrictions on it, that's fine. If someone has to pull a permit and pay a small fee, that's also fine. And if that person, the neighbors, complain, and they start getting complaints, we pull the permit, and they're not allowed to have them. We gave them an opportunity to do it. They didn't do it. But what... I mean, what's next if we limit that? Are we going to say you're not allowed to have pit bulls in the city? Or, you know, larger breeds of dogs? I mean, I'm pretty sure the residents of Seven Hills and the people that want chickens are going to take care of their property and maintain it, and if they don't, then that's the Building Department's job. I'd also like to say I have four to five... I think I was up to five people whose children want to raise these chickens, not to eat or not for eggs, but to put in the 4-H Club and actually show their birds at county fairs and other, you know, areas where they can win awards. And that's... I'd rather have a kid, you know, raising a chicken to show in a 4-H Club than hanging out in the parks destroying stuff. So, I mean, everyone's looking at it from like a smell point of view. I haven't heard one city complain about a smell. I haven't had one neighbor complain about a smell. We already allow certain people to have chickens in this city, and we don't get any complaints. So I'd like to hear from some of the other members of council on this.
Let me interrupt you before we do that. This is Delacqua. A couple of things that I'm hearing here. It sounds like we are all kind of saying the same thing, that there are going to have to be some criteria as to what people would be permitted to do. If we're going to be issuing a permit, and then we're going to be pulling the permit if there's a complaint, we have to understand what the rules are going to be that will be applied evenly and across the board to everybody with regard to whether or not you're going to be able to continue under that permit or not. I'd also point out that this is the first time that we have had any public conversation, open meeting, either a committee or a council as a whole, in many, many years on this subject. So I don't know that I'm ready to take a vote either way on whether or not it should be immediately referred out to be placed on an agenda with, you know, a very short conversation over the phone without having a chance to really dig into this. I hear what everybody's saying. My initial thought, though, on this is we have to do a little more research. Pat, I understand you've done a lot. I have done next to none, and Pat, sorry, and Tom, sounds like you've done a little bit, but I think everybody needs to get up to speed before we make a decision on this. And again, what I'm hearing is that everybody's kind of saying the same thing in a different way. There's going to have to be some sort of rules with a permit procedure, and that means that you have to have a criteria as to how that permit would be made, how it would be withdrawn, so that everybody is treated equally. Rest of council, anything?
Chairman Norm Martin.
Norm, yes, please.
First of all, if we would look around and see the condition that we're in right now at the community under the pandemic rules, we really don't have the opportunity to receive public debate on these types of issues. And these are the types of issues that need to be held off to the side until such time that there can be real public debates and some real input. It's one thing to place issues on the ballot and et cetera, you know, where we have an opportunity to, you know, look at the important items and budgetary items and et cetera, but to be changing ordinances of this nature and of this big shift in direction needs to have public debate, and you cannot provide that in this type of environment. So I would suggest that it be held off. If it's not held off, I have an opinion as well, and I may be the only member on this board who has actually raised chickens in their life and had a chicken coop and had neighbors with chickens and have dealt with chickens most of, you know, most of my younger life. And I'm going to tell you, once you smell chicken manure, you will not forget the smell, and I'm afraid most of you here have not. And it doesn't matter how big your lot is, whether it's a quarter-acre city lot or half-acre big lot, that's not big enough. The wind blows. The State's Academy makes great examples of other... You know, the reason why these chickens have to be in such protective cages and coops is because the predators do come. Chickens are just a prize catch if they can get to them, therefore, the predators are coming through your neighbor's yard. Can't get the chickens, they might get something else that's out about that is your pet. But I'm just going to tell you that you're creating an issue for odors that need to be in the countryside. You know, this is a city environment in which we are living. It's a city environment in which we said we didn't want native weeds and et cetera that never got out of committee, because we said, "Hey, you want to do that kind of stuff, go to the countryside to do that." And here, we're doing something similar because it's a hobby for a few. There's 12,000 people who live in this community, not just the 25 or 35 who may have interest in doing this, and I suggest that sanitation and public health and the ability for a person to enjoy their property free of nuisances, in this case odor nuisances and other nuisances, is paramount. So I reject the leap of logic that has been made here regarding that this extends to other anti-government type of stuff and et cetera. It's all about chickens. So go see some chickens in their environment and take a whiff. I don't care how clean you keep the coop. You can't ever keep it clean enough. And so anyway, that's so... I'm just going to tell you that for someone who's been around them, and I suggest you think real strongly before you create an issue. Once you create this issue, you say you're just going to pull the permit. You're not going to do that. It's a due process, and you can tangle the city into a greater mess when you have a due process that you can't really measure what's going on. Noise ordinance, we have the ability to measure disciples, but how are you going to get a sniff-o-meter for a chicken manure to be able to determine whether or not it's a nuisance? It's going to be subjective criteria used by the neighbors. It's going to be subjective criteria used by enforcement. So I think the city did the appropriate thing, whether it was eight years ago or 10 years ago, to ban this type of approach within a city environment of this nature. And if we were out in the rural area, I'd say no problem. You have five acres, 10 acres, you can probably get away with it, but not on small lots. Thank you.
Does anyone else on council have anything? Anyone on the committee? Okay, well...
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, this is Phil. I did a little research for Pat, and unfortunately, I misspelled his name and didn't get it to him before tonight. I've got like five ordinances that show how other cities have restricted them. Some allow it, some don't. A number of cities, like Pat said, just allow them, and there's no ordinance to follow. I was in Broadview Heights today, and they just allow them, period. So I'll forward these ordinances to you, may give you an idea or two of what other communities may have done, and along with the ordinance itself, which... I'll give you the citation right now. 505-022 is our ordinance that regulates dangerous, wild, and undomesticated animals, reptiles, insects, or pets prohibited. And it doesn't prohibit roosters, but it does prohibit chickens. So I'll get that to you.
Director Pignatello, it does not... It is restricts roosters, not chickens. It tends. They don't restrict hens. They restrict roosters.
Yeah, no, I'm saying our ordinance doesn't restrict roosters. It restricts chickens.
Well, Pat's saying the opposite, but we'll take a look at it and...
I understand.
Okay. Anything else for the committee? All right. Rich will look forward to receiving that from you. You can just send it by email. I would suggest you send it to everybody on council and the mayor as well, since eventually everybody's going to have to talk about this. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn the Rules Committee. Okay, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn the Rules Committee.
I'll second, I'll call Elliot.
Elliot, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Snitzky, aye.
Okay, we will adjourn at 6:32. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, moving on, the, uh, Committee of Parks and Recreation with Chairman Norman Martin.
I'm Chairman Norman Martin. Uh, there is nothing in the Parks and Rec folder for this evening. Uh, Jen, do you have anything to add to the comments? I mean, add to the, to the table for tonight? Jen Berger?
I'm coming. Sorry, I'm-
Hearing none, anything?
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Jen.
I had to get a charger, my computer was gonna die.
Oh, no.
I am not recreational, okay. Um, I did want to bring up one quick thing. Um, we did get some quotes for replacing the lights at Valleywood. Um, the NOPEC grant would most likely be able to offset this. Um, I didn't turn it in just yet, 'cause I'm waiting on one more. But right now, the best bet looks like, uh, let's see here, it's about $97,000 for materials, and a little over $30,000 for install. Um, I will be sending in officially the, uh, votes to, over to the Parks and Rec, um, committee, but I don't have anything for sure just yet.
Hey Jen, appreciate that, any, anything else?
Um, I think that's about it on my list of items.
Jack, is it Jack Johnson I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, Councilman, thank you.
Please, yes, of course.
Just to piggyback on Jen's comments, um, s, um, re-converting or switching this light, these lights over to LEDs will significantly, um, decrease the electric bill at Valleywood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any other comments from members of the Parks and Rec Committee?
Um-
Councilman Martin? Go, go ahead. Stacy, go ahead.
For me?
Hey, Stacy, you're recognized, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much, Chairman. Um, I just had a quick question, uh, is, the, the NOPEC grant, will that cover the cost of these? You said it, it was just about, is that what, I, I wasn't sure if I heard you correctly, I'm sorry.
Um, so generally, we have money in that NOPEC account, and I know that, um, it was brought up earlier this year as well, um, but we do have money from past years. Um, oh, sorry. Also, um, the opportu, I'm not sure how much we get every year, but the, um, company that we were looking at going with is the people that originally installed them, um, the lights that are there, and that was about 30 years ago.
30 years?
Um, these lights have about a 25-year warranty, and, um, what we could do is we are able to finance through them, and you pay it off in five-year increments. So basically, what you could do is use, assuming the NOPEC money would be enough to cover it, um, you can use that NOPEC money each year.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any chance of getting lights at Calvin Park anytime? I know we have, we have evening games first, we have evening games at Valleywood, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be a benefit for Valleywood. And then possibly down the road, we could get them at, at Calvin Park and have evening games there as well.
I, I, you could basically put lights on any field in the evening, that wouldn't be a problem. Um, I know we did run some electrical, um, to the outside and the middle of the ball-diamonds when we put the scoreboard in, so I don't think it would be hard to tap off of that at all.
Council President?
Councilman Elliot, you're recognized, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, we did look into lights in that area when, when we redid the fields last year, and, um, another one of these things where you're gonna have to get approval from the neighbors, apparently, because some of them are against putting lights there. And we did, we did some research on it, uh, last year, and it's only gonna give you possibly one extra game per night, and the cost was well over, I think, $60,000 to $70,000 to put lights around the fields. Um, and that was just field, uh, I believe it was number one, the big field. And the benefits, it really isn't gonna benefit us to put lights over there, have one more game a night. Uh, that's just what we came up with with the Baseball Federation. I mean, you, you don't want people playing baseball till 11:30 at night or 11 o'clock at night, when, you know, that's what was the concern with the neighbors surrounding Calvin Park. Just, just food for thought. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it. And thank you, Jen, for your clarification, if we could use the NOPEC grant, that would be great. Thank you, Chair.
And Stacy, thank you for your comments. Uh, any members of council have, uh, questions or comments of Jen?
Councilman Snitzky, I have a question.
Snitzky, you are recognized.
Jen, I have a question for you about ordinance 62-2020. I, um, I don't know anything about life packs, but it just, it just, on the face of it, $2,120 to maintain three pieces of, uh, of equipment, i- it just seems like a lot. I mean, can you, can you educate me a little bit as to why we need to spend $700 per pieces, per life pack a year to maintain them? I, 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 it just seems like a lot, please.
Uh, well, those are our AEDs, our defibrillators. So in the event that they are used, um, it covers basically bringing in the equipment to replace it. Um, obviously, knock on wood, you hope that you never have to. Uh, the batteries in those are quite expensive. It also includes the life of the pads for as long as we, um, have those units.
Okay, thank you. So this isn't just a maintenance agreement, this is a replacement agreement, if in fact one of them has to be used.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll, uh, it includes like some of the parts and stuff. Those batteries are incredibly expensive, um, the lithium batteries and stuff, so, um, and they come out and they do the preventative maintenance, they check through the machines, and they do updates for them every time.
All right, thank you, that's good enough for me, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other, uh, questions or comments from the other members of council? Councilman Martin, this is Councilman Kula. Oh, Councilman, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just a comment, uh, I know we, we had talked about, uh, getting something done on the Calvin Park, uh, concession stand. I'm looking into that information right now, just an FYI, to see what we can do with some of the trades that I'm affiliated with, uh, to upgrade that or, or to do something with that. So I'm, I'm still looking into that information, and waiting on telephone calls back from people to try and, uh, try and get this thing moved forward.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other members of council? Okay, thank you, I, uh, hearing none, I move that we go ahead and close the-
Chairman Martin, this is Mayor Viasciata.
Oh, Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Chairman. I had actually a question for Director Berger. Did we need any specific council action today on the Valleywood lights? Or are you just surprising of the council what we are working on?
Um, I don't believe I will need any approval, uh, this evening for the lights, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, I thought earlier, I seen an email where there was a timing concern, and I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an oversight.
Yes, I did just hear back from the manufacturer, so our timing won't be a problem now. Thank you for checking on that.
And just to be clear for council, that what we're talking about would be the remainder of the NOPEC money we have for the last, uh, 19 and 20. And we'll potentially need NOPEC funds from 21, um, to pay for the Valleywood lights in their entirety. I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear and on board with that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, final call for any other members of council. Hearing none, I move that we adjourn at 6:42 for Parks and Rec.
Councilman Elliot, second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Kelly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman Martin. We'll now move on to the planning with Chairman Tom Snitzky.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I don't have anything currently in my folder that I'm aware of, although I did receive an email, uh, about an hour ago, uh, on a potential lot split, hold on a minute, let me get it up in front of me here. Potential lot split, uh, at 7193 Seven Hills Boulevard. Um, Dan, are you there?
Yes, Councilman, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, sir. Um, thi- this is all very preliminary, it looks like, uh, I'm speaking not only to Dan, but to everybody. Uh, it looks very preliminary, uh, and I'm gonna let Dan speak to this, because the way, and I, like I said, I just got to read through this very quickly. Um, it looks to me like the, um, owner of the property is trying to do a lot split, uh, to have two additional residential properties there at the corner of Cherry and Seven Hills Boulevard at the end of the walkway. Um, but there are also be some issues with the property that would seem to me to preclude taking any action on this until those issues are, uh, resolved. So I'm gonna let Dan speak to this for a minute, and we'll go from there. Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, this was 7193 Seven Hills Boulevard, right? Recdo, okay, good. Okay, this was, this was, uh, previously discussed at, uh, at one of our prior committee meetings. Um, I have a, a depart, Engineering Department review commentary dated June 16th, and there are comments, they're included in a two-page, uh, memo, okay? And, uh, I'm assuming, Councilman, you, you have a copy of that?
Yeah, tha- that was just, I actually, uh, it was just sent to me, uh, by Carol today. Uh, nothing new for the committee, I've attached, however, the engineer's comments for the matter of old business concerning the proposal for the lot split. So I, I, you know, the fact that it came through, I thought maybe there was some discussion that you needed to have with council or with me about this lot split. It just, I don't know whether it's, it's, uh, ahead of the game here, or whether there's some, uh, discussion that needs to be taken place here.
Well, the only, the only other thing I had was that the owner was supposed to be contacting the law department to set up a meeting with him, and preferably myself included with this meeting, uh, to discuss some issues he had brought up in an email, uh, regarding potential litigation against the city on his lot, regarding wetlands that were allegedly created on his lot due to a driveway that was installed on one of the adjacent lots next door to him. And that's, you know, you know, that's uncomfortable when you hear something like that. So that, that is something I thought that we perhaps as administrators should, should discuss with this applicant, um, before council would decide to, uh, take action on, on approving a, uh, a lot split on, on this property.
I fully agree with that. Uh, to split this property before they, uh, resolve the water issues is, is putting the cart before the horse. Uh, I had received it, so I thought maybe there was a discussion that needs to be done. Um, I would appreciate it, I, uh, let's see, this went to everybody on the committee. So I, I, uh, I'll just leave it go at that for now. Uh, again, I think that we need to resolve the water issues and any, uh, potential litigation before we move forward on a lot split. Okay, anything else?
Um, Councilman, if I, if I, you know, your suggestion, should I perhaps reach out to the applicant, or will somebody reach out to the applicant to remind him that he should be, uh, in contact with the law department to set this appointment up?
Uh, I would say that either, I, I, I think, why don't you, since you've already had communication with him, reach out to him, copy in the, uh, law department, and let them know, you can copy me and too, and, uh, the rest of the committee, you can, let, let them know that he, they need to, he needs to, uh, get in contact with the law department and work out the problems.
Very well, very good, I will. Thank you. Thank you.
I have nothing else for PZB and E. Um, we have a couple zoning motions this evening, which I'll make in my miscellaneous. Uh, I would note that these zoning motions were passed unanimously, uh, by the zoning, uh, the zoning board, so, uh, that's it for me, unless somebody else on the committee has something. All right, uh, the other thing I would tell you is, is that the, uh, uh, since it's my committee, the, 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 uh, me, I also sit on Public Works, and the meeting that we had to deal with water issues in the city was a very, very good first step. And I think it's, uh, a long overdue, and it's, it's nice to see some, some action in that area. And it, 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 it just was a good thing, it was a very good thing, that after all this time, it's, it's finally looking like it's gonna happen. Does anybody else on council or in the administration have anything for PZB and E? All right, if that's, if I, if that's a, a, a no, I will make a motion to-
Chairman Snitzky, this is Mayor Viasciata, I was just waiting my term, but I didn't get-
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Council, um, should anticipate, uh, a little bit of good news coming from a planning perspective. Um, I've reached a tentative agreement that'll be coming for council and the Planning Commission, as soon as possible, for Erie Bank, uh, to build their district headquarters in Seven Hills. Wow. I'll require some variance is, um, uh, for property just west of 41, 41 Rockside. Uh, they'll go to Planning Commission, um, there'll also be, um, economic development package that I'm putting together. Um, we'll get the planning process going through the Planning Commission as early as possible, and the next time council reconvenes, I'll be providing, um, the financial particulars, um, in detail to council, um, but since the planning process is going to be starting any day now, um, I wanted to give everyone the heads up. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Mr. Viasciata, uh, do you wanna speak at all about the email that we received a little while ago, regarding property on Rockside?
I'm not aware of any email that we received a little while ago.
It looks like it was sent to all of council, uh, and it doesn't look like your name was in there.
So how can I speak to an email that maybe potentially my name was not out of there? Uh, it came in late in the day, I, I was in Seven Hills office, uh, all day until about 4 o'clock.
I didn't know if you-
I haven't checked emails since 4, so I, it's not that whether or not I wanna speak, I'm, uh, not privy to any know you're talking about at this time, so I don't think it's, uh, prudent to go any further, for me at least.
All right. Okay, um, all right, in that case, I will, uh, I will, uh, end, uh, PZB and E at 6:50, 6:52. Uh, can I get a second?
Second, Councilman Kuriasis.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye, Kuriasis.
Aye, Snitzky? Richard, are you there?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, yes, aye.
All right. PZB and E is out at six fifty-two.
Thank you Chairperson Snitsky. This is Council President Stacy Kelly. We'll begin Finance Committee at six fifty-two PM. Okay. Before I start going through items in my folder, uh, first I wanted to bring to the attention of my committee that, uh, at our last meeting on July fourteenth, uh, we had a discussion in regards to what is now ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-twenty. We had placed it on the agenda, and I, uh, erroneously mentioned the use. Um, I incorrectly stated that, uh, this is for, um, let me see here. I'm sorry, got another call here. Uh, I erroneously stated that this is for Sixmo Architects in relation to work that the mayor had contracted out for a study on some, uh, buildings within the city. Uh, the amount was correct, and the vendor was correct, but the use was incorrect. Uh, what, what that was for, what the ordinance was for, was for, uh, it was an amount of five thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents payable to Sixmo Architects, and what it was for was for the month of June of twenty-twenty for the interim chief building official, uh, to review plans. So, if any, if, if no one has any issues with that, we'll move on, but I just wanted to state a point of clarification for the record. Any comments from the committee members?
Madam Chairman, this is Delacqua.
Councilman Delacqua.
Thank you. Does any of this include work on, uh, the proposal regarding the Dairy Queen?
No. Oh, that I don't know.
May I, Madam Chairperson? This is Mayor Bianciato. May I answer? Councilman Delacqua, question?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes. Yes. The, there are two items that Sixmo charges for in the month of, uh, June. They were the interim emergency chief building officer, um, uh, between building commissioners, and, um, the interim chief building officer hosted, arranged, planned, whatever you wanna call it, uh, the pre-application meeting with, uh, Dairy Queen. So, to answer your question, Councilman Delacqua, yes. A portion of this bill, uh, did cover the city's, uh, review of the Dairy Queen proposal.
Okay, well, with that confusion then, I would, uh, ask that the matter be reconsidered, uh, so that I would have the opportunity to, uh, recuse myself from a vote.
Okay. I will make a motion to reconsider, uh, ordinance sixty-one dash twenty-twenty, an amount of five thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents payable to Sixmo Architects for plan reviews for the month of twenty-twenty, as well as the interim chief building official.
Second, Nora Martin.
Yes, I'll vote yes- I'll vote yes on the, uh, yes on the reconsideration.
Yes. Martin.
Kelly, yes. Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you so much. I wrote that down, second Martin. Okay. Okay. Moving on to my folder now. Sorry for any confusion that caused. Uh, first thing I have here, it looks like this is in regards to, uh, amended ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-twenty, which is not on our agenda for this evening. This will likely be on it for Friday, the thirty-first, at our special, special council meeting. Uh, I just wanted a note for the committee and the rest of council. There are two typos in the permanent parcel numbers that will be corrected during that meeting. Um, just a simple typo, just putting it out there so everyone understands. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Uh, moving on, there is, this is in regards to, uh, on our agenda this evening, ordinance fifty-one dash twenty-twenty. This is in relation to the planned unit development ordinance, and there is also a typo, uh, in the permanent parcel numbers as well. So I will note that change when we get to it. In our, uh, as we go along in our council meeting, we reach that part of the agenda, uh, it looks like the number should just be changed in the second digit of the permanent parcel number, or second set of numbers, I should say. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. Uh, let's see what's next. Um, in relation to, uh, this evening's agenda, ordinance number fifty-nine dash twenty-twenty, this is for a contractual agreement with, um, let's see, Solid Waste to Waste Management of Ohio. It looks like, um, I'm just gonna read this from Director Johnson. The current budget for the twenty-twenty for waste hauling is nine hundred and one dollars, nine hundred and one eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, next year's cost to exercise the option is estimated to be twenty thousand dollars more. So the amount, not to exceed, an ordinance number fifty-nine dash twenty-twenty needs to be revised to nine hundred and twenty-one thousand eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, let me see what it is there. Yeah, I don't even see a number in this. All right, we'll add that number in ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-twenty. I'll make a motion to add that. Are there any questions in regards to this change to ordinance fifty-nine? Okay. I'm assuming everyone's okay with that? Uh, it looks like, what else do I have here? Hold on here. Uh, this is received from, uh, Fire Chief Mecklenburg. It's for an MOU at the state of Ohio. Uh, it appears our radiation detecting, de- detection meters, they have reached the end of their life. So, they were supplied to us by the state sometime in the seventies and eighties, and we need to update those. So the MOU needs to be signed so that we can receive a new one, and it's not technically a contract, but the MOU states that we will receive a new detector, and, uh, that the state will supply the annual calibration of the unit at no charge to the city. So, um, if I could just ask the fire chief, this is just, we're, it sounds like we're basically just exchanging it out with no cost, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. This is Chief Mecklenburg. Uh, there will be no cost. The old meter has reached its end of life, and the new meter will, uh, will replace it as soon as the MOU is signed.
Okay, got it. All right. Any questions from the committee? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for us to accept this MOU and move forward.
Delacqua, second.
All in favor?
Delacqua, aye.
Martin, aye.
Kelly, aye. And Martin. Okay. That is approved. Thank you so much. Um, I have nothing further for my committee. Um, I will likely ask for an executive session. Um, before that, is there any other, uh, miscellaneous comments or anything from the committee?
Chairman Kelly?
I'm sorry?
This is Councilman Coolie. I, I just had a quick question to, uh, Director Johnson, if I may?
Sure, go ahead, Councilman, the floor is yours.
Um, in regards to the, uh, I think it was, on the, like, on the, uh, the ordinance for the, the salt, I think that the, the amount on that, um, if, if Director Johnson can remember that, was the total on that purchase for salt a hundred thousand four hundred dollars, Director Johnson?
Uh, Madam Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Director, please.
Uh, yes, Councilman, that, that was the amount.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
And that's not on emergency, correct, Director?
That's correct, Madam Chairman.
Thank you so much. Okay. Any further questions from council? Okay. Okay, um, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion for executive session for, uh, possible litigation.
Second, Martin.
Uh, I'm sorry, Ca- are, are we talking about threatened litigation, or pending, or imminent?
Threat of lit- threat of litigation.
Okay. Uh, would-
That was seconded by Martin?
Yes, are, are we taking a vote?
Yes. Roll call?
Delacqua, yes.
Martin, yes.
Kelly, yes. Uh, if I could just have, uh, council, the mayor, and, uh, our legal, legal department.
Okay, I'll let all the other directors down. Thank you, gentlemen, over to you.
I'm going over to the end.